To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, acceptance of meeting minutes. Discussion and possible action vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of February 5th, 2019, to be accepted, approved by the town council. Do I have a motion? Motion by DeLorenzo, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Nah, Nakala.
Nakala. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have it. Item number two, liquor license. Notice was given of public hearing to be held this date in the Providence Journal on February 15th and 22nd, 2019, for a new BV liquor license for Lucky Cottage Inc., doing business as Lucky Cottage, 1601 Middle Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Is there anybody here from? Please come forward, state your name.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Valentino Di Lombardi. My lower office is at 959 Middle Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, and I represent Lucky Cottage Inc., the petitioner for a new Class BV full liquor license at 1601 Middle Spring Avenue. My client and I thank the council for the opportunity to appear and address any concerns and answer any questions the council may have. President with me is Mr. Kevin Man Singalau, the owner of the company. He resides at 49 Saber Street in Cranston, Rhode Island. He has been in the restaurant business for many years. In Rhode Island, he operated the Mai Tai Restaurant in Coventry and the Mai Tai Two Restaurant at this location before selling it to the former owner. After selling his Coventry location, he still wanted to be in this business and saw the opportunity when Ken Wach went into receivership. He has a working knowledge of the business, including purchasing and selling of food and beverages. This establishment will mainly be a restaurant. The reason for the liquor license is to provide the dining clientele with the ability to purchase a pre-dinner cocktail, wine with their dinner, possibly an after-dinner drink. It would be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to operate a fine dining restaurant without a full liquor license. Mr. Lau is tip certified, as will all of the restaurant employees who serve liquor. He will be principally running the business. Again, his knowledge of the business, as it pertains to the operation of the restaurant and the liquor license, and understanding of the responsibility to maintain the utmost care in the area to protect the general public is unmatched. We realize the council must be very protective of the public welfare in determining whether to allow the issuance of a full liquor license and respect the work that they perform. We believe that the petitioner has alleviated the council's concerns. Thank you, and my client and I are available to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. What are the planned hours of operation?
Planned hours of operation would be 11:30 in the morning till 10:00, 10:30, 11 o'clock in the evening.
Is he planning on doing delivery out of there as well?
Yes.
Any other questions? You have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion made by Bakala for approval, seconded. Seconded by Martone.
Sir.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, all right.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, come on. You're more than welcome.
Good evening, my name is Everett La Mountain. I live at 122-
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Everett La Mountain. I live at 122 Duchess Avenue, have been the resident and the property owner for the last 21 years. At this point right now, Councilor Famigetti knows exactly where I live. I call it Beirut, as we speak right now, with the Greco properties. My main concern is that now that he's taken down all those buildings, what is the build-out? What's gonna happen there? Is it gonna be one liquor license? Is it gonna be two liquor license? Is it gonna be three liquor license? Like I said, we just pretty much got the old Union Deposit Bank under, it's up and running now with just the Pizza Hut, and they just removed the house on Middle Spring Ave, the old Rubino property, and then the Rubino's daughters' home care building. I understand that Mr. Greco does own the Ken Wach, the 1601 and Middle Spring property, and also the old Salvo property. So, that's pretty much my concern. In the past, when it was the Ken Wach, we've really never had a problem. I just don't know what's going forward. That's pretty much my main concern. Like I said, in the past, we never had a problem with the Ken Wach. I've been there 21 years. My father owned it 10 years prior. I've lived there since we bought the property in 1988. So that's basically my concern. If anyone could answer what's, something what's gonna happen with that property. I understand, I'm kinda talking apples and oranges with the liquor license, but that's my concern as a resident, and I'm not planning on moving anytime soon, to be honest with you. So, if it's just gonna be that liquor license, then fine, but if, I don't know what's coming to the property, what's coming to the area, and this is my only chance basically to stand up and, you know, say my piece, so to speak.
I'll be honest with you, I have no idea, so I can't answer your question.
Okay. I'm just saying, two weeks ago, they, Lombardi's, came down and took it all out. I said, it looks like Beirut. I don't know if you've been by there.
You're talking about the house next to Ken Wach? They're abutted?
They're abutted, absolutely. You can see my house is on Duchess, so I run parallel to Middle Spring Ave. I've got a beautiful view of Shaw's Market, the full view now, where I just had Martin Avenue before. Not that I'm, I'm not complaining about that, I'm not here to oppose it, but I'm just saying, I don't know what the build-out, what the future is, and with his development of that area. Like I said, I do abut the-
My question would be is, if he was gonna tear that building down, right? Why would he be renting it out?
I'm not saying 1601, he owns the abutting property. Mr. Wensky knows quite well.
The abutting property council, they already started knocking it down.
It's gone.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
It's gone.
It's gone.
Both of them. It's not, they're piles of rubble.
If I could ask, are you concerned he's gonna take that property, that property and-
No, he owns it, I'm not-
No, no, I know, but you're saying-
No, I just don't know, like, is there another liquor license coming in? Like, is he, like, he's gonna put a liquor, that's my, that's my-
He won't know that until he builds a structure or he does something else with it.
I totally understand that, and I know it's sometimes it's-
Oh, no.
It's apples and oranges, and I totally get that, but I'm just kinda like, they've destroyed all these buildings, and I know he owns the, where Utica is, where my, my property is right at Martin Avenue. You know what I'm saying?
How many houses do I guess?
How many streets? Probably 10.
Yeah, there's about 10.
About somewhere, from Lee to Taft. That's the only thing I'm saying.
It sounds to me, it sounds to me, you're talking to the zoning-
No, I didn't, no, I totally understand, but this is my only chance to say my piece. As far as liquor license, I mean, I don't want more traffic that's gonna come up. You know, I'm not, like I told you, I mean, there was never a problem with the Ken Wach when it was there, honestly, it wasn't, but like I said, I'm just, if it's just one liquor license, there you go, I'm all for it, I'll be honest with you, but I'm just saying, I don't know what the build-out is.
Yeah, so, I completely understand your concern. I think, my feeling, and I can only tell you what my position is, tonight, we're looking at this one particular property-
I totally understand that.
If there were to be another application for a liquor license-
Right.
The 200 feet of butters would get notified, and I, I'm very cognizant of the concern of kinda the density of too many liquor licenses in the same location, so, so at this point, I think that we've heard a nice presentation about this liquor license, it sounds like it's gonna be a restaurant, and, and so, I would, I completely understand your concern. I think that's certainly something that we would take note of in case there started to be kind of a proliferation of liquor licenses in the area, at least.
That's correct, and you do get the opportunity to come back and speak again.
No, and I, and I will exercise that, I'm just saying, this is my only opportunity. Not that I have any problems, like I said, I never had a problem with the Ken Wach previous, and with the Chinese restaurant, that that's what it's still going to be. A Lucky Liberty kinda threw me off a little bit.
Everett, your main concern, though, was basically that turning into a strip mall across, right? And you were basically looking in front of it, looking at that.
I understand it's gonna get developed, I don't have a problem with that, I don't have, there's nothing I can do about that, it's zoned commercial, it's commercial. My, my two problems is noise and traffic, 'cause I'm a cut-through to, through Lexington. So before you, when you're going towards Fatucket, right at the shores, people take the left up Martin or off Utica, and they go back into the, towards Angel Road, you know what I'm trying to say? So, like I said, it was never a problem with the Ken Wach, and if it's just the Ken Wach, I'm good with, I'm more than fine with it, but like I said, I just don't know what the build-out is gonna be from there, and how much more traffic is gonna be-
Right.
And how it's gonna operate and go through the neighborhood. I do, there are several, it's probably about, it's, there are three or four children grade school that catch the bus, not that it's gonna be open at 9:00 in the morning, 10:30, 11:00. I totally get that, but, like I said, I just wanted to say pretty much that, but that's what, those are my concerns with, I don't know what the build-out is gonna be from there and how much is it gonna like impact.
I don't think any of us know. No, I'm glad you came, Everett, because I remember talking about this, and that is a legitimate concern for that, because you don't, you know, that is still a residential area, and I've seen that firsthand, that you are right on top of those properties right there. Now, this, for us, is obviously just one liquor license, which has already been there.
I'm not against the liquor license.
No, I, I get, but I am glad that you came, because I know what the situation is like over there, but I'm glad that you, you educated the rest of the council.
Yeah, no, just like I said, we never had a problem. I'm not against the liquor license. Not that I'm not a drinker anyways, but it brings business, I'm all for business in the town, but like I said, I just, it's like, this is my only shot with this one piece that, I guess, to, I guess, say my piece, not that I'm against it, but I wish it were the last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, vicuinating license. Town council to consider approval of a vicuinating license for Lucky Cottage Incorporated, known business as Lucky Cottage, 1601 Middle Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Any questions? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion approved by Martone, seconded by Nakala. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, man. Okay, proposed ordinances, notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Item number four, ordinance 19-001, an ordinance of the town of North Providence amending Chapter 19, Section 19-13 entitled, "Through Trucking/Trucks Over Four Tons, 8,000 Pounds Gross Weight prohibited on Certain Streets to Add Wood Cliff Avenue to That List." Do you have a motion to adopt, ordinance 19-001? Motion been made by Councilman Justy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Nakala, any questions? There being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, ordinance 19-002, an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 10, Section 19-30 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled, "No Parking on Certain Streets Generally," to provide for certain parking restrictions on Spicer Street in the Town of North Providence. Do you have a motion to adopt ordinance 19-002?
Mr. President, before we vote on the ordinance, I just wanted to address, there are some people here tonight from Spicer, and there's continuing to be a problem over there. This is obviously the first step towards resolving these parking issues on the street. Before I took the podium tonight, there were some concerns still about the entrance and egress of the employee parking lot, and I just wanted to ask our clerk if we ever heard anything back, 'cause we did request a response from the zoning official regarding that.
We did get a response that they were in compliance with that drive-thru, the little area over there.
The employee entrance?
Yes. They were in compliance, is what he said, and I asked him to please give me something in writing, I'm not sure that I got it.
Could you follow up?
I certainly can.
Okay, thank you. That's all I-
Okay.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, is there any questions?
Question on that no parking, is that for residents only?
This ordinance is for resident parking only on your side of Spicer.
Resident parking, right?
Yes.
Okay, how, how many, how do you go about signing up for it? Or are you gonna put them on the whole street?
You come to my office with your registration, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You come to my office with your registration, and we would give you permits, visitor permits.
They gotta come down here and get-
I'm sorry.
Do they have to come down here and get a permit?
Yes, you would have to come to the clerk.
So I can tell the residents where to go if they need a sign?
Yes, they, all they, all they'll get is a little, a little diage kinda thing that goes in, like a permit, that goes in their window, and they can get them for residents themselves and for visitors.
But there will be a sign on the street?
Resident parking only.
Resident parking.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
But they do have to take their-
They gotta, they gotta come down and apply for it?
Yes, and they have to take their registration showing that they live on that specific street.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Hi. I'm Denise Dewall, I live at 18 Spicer Street in North Providence. What do you mean by compliance with the entrance? How is, how are they in compliance with that entrance? What do you mean exactly?
They said that that was, he said that that was what was decided at planning and zoning, and they were in compliance with what they voted on that evening.
Okay, so then how do we go about doing something about this, because it's a nightmare? They go, people who are visiting Providence Bagel go in and out there all day long. During the snowstorm Saturday, one of the employees that worked there came out of there during about 6:00, my grandson was playing in the snow on the front lawn, he swirled all around the street and just laughed. Is that what we're gonna have to put up with?
So, they-
Yeah, I mean-
I think the best way to tackle that is, you know, we'll follow up again with another letter to the zoning official-
Okay.
But I think maybe we can bring this on the next month's agenda, and if you could bring pictures-
I have pictures.
Of them going in and out.
Oh, yes.
So that's something that we can at least present. Maybe you can bring them to the clerk's office that we can attach them to-
I have videos, I have pictures.
And that way we can show what the, you know, what the exact issue is that you're encountering over there. Like I said, I, before I had said, that this isn't, you know, one solution to the issue, I think there's gonna be steps. Step one, we just voted on tonight, which is great. Step two, I think, with your help getting those pictures to show that-
I have them.
And then we can send that to the zoning official. That would be a big help, too.
All right.
As well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
This, Ken, can I-
Councilman.
This may be a bit premature, but does it make sense to have a representative from Providence Bagel attend if they're gonna be on the agenda?
I agree with you.
I mean, I, I don't know that there's anybody that's more able to handle this, or maybe it would be kind of a follow-up meeting.
That being said, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to Providence Bagel inviting them to the next monthly council meeting, so a representative can be here and we can address these grievances altogether.
Okay, I'm gonna take a vote on the first motion that was made. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. That was to adopt the ordinance. Second motion made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone, any questions on that? To send a letter to have a representative from Providence Bagel at the next council meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Who made the motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
Manny.
Manny, and who's second?
Mari.
Mari.
Okay, ordinance 19-003Z was advertised in the Providence Journal on February 11th, 18th, and 25th, 2019, as well as posted on the Secretary of State website due to an amending the zoning ordinance. Item number six. Okay, I'm just gonna give them a second to read these over. Is there any questions on the change on page three?
So, this is basically that billboard can be relocated, but we can't, they won't be adding new ones?
Correct. And, and, I believe we have a planning board recommendation, we should probably make a motion to include that in the record. You all should receive the, you know, packages of planning board recommendation recommending passage of the ordinance, and that is in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance 19-003Z as amended in accordance to the recommendation of the planning board?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone, any questions? There being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven, holiday sales. Town council to consider approval of a holiday sales license for SAF LLC DBA Sam's Food Store, 1 Humbert Street, North Providence. Is there anyone here from Sam's Food Store? Just step to the microphone, sir. State your name for the record.
What is it?
Just state your name.
State name?
Name?
My name is Mohamed Sugrue.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the holiday license?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Justy, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Nakala, any questions? There being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, expansion of liquor license, outdoor dining premise of Camp Nowhere. Received a request from James Ruskowski, owner of Camp Nowhere, for permission of expansion of liquor license and dining premise at Camp Nowhere, 1838 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Requested, request is for space originally approved by town council to be, to be changed. Received a letter. Troy, can you please take Camp Nowhere off the agenda for this upcoming March meeting? We will not be able to attend, and would like to reschedule it for April's meeting. Sorry for any inconvenience, thank you, Ezra. Okay, do I have a motion to continue this to April?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine, stop sign. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on a stop sign at the end of Coe Street where it intersects with Palm Street. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you'll recall, last council meeting, we had on the agenda Arrow Street, and Arrow Street is in the same neighborhood, designed the same way, it's a very narrow street. I had a resident, Mr. Coppola, who's here tonight with us, showing that, first of all, the parking issue on the corner, it does prove to be an issue, but also the entrance and egress onto and off of Coe Street seems to be a problem over there. I do have Mr. Coppola here, I don't know if he wants to come and speak on the stop sign any further.
My name's David Coppola, 9 Coe Street. The house has been in the family since 1959, when it was founded, we've been in the neighborhood that long. I have a neighbor, he's a, he rents the house, I believe his mother owns the house. He continues to park on the wrong side of the street, parks to the corner. I took a picture, when it snows, the plow cannot widen the street wide enough, so when you're coming to the corner of Palm Street, and there's a car from Palm Street that wants to turn into Coe's, you're sitting in the middle of the street, because the street is narrow to begin with. So with the stop sign, and I guess on, next on the agenda is no parking to the corner, it would help the traffic situation immensely.
Given that, I'd like to make a motion to send this to the ordinance committee to adopt, see if we can adopt a stop sign.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Number 10-
Oh, let me just read that, okay. Item number 10, no parking to corner. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on placing no parking to corner sign on the corner of Coe Street and Palm Street. Councilman?
Again, Mr. Coppola, he pretty much recited the issue.
Again, I have a picture, I mean, of, of, he has two cars parked in the street, now he has a driveway, so I don't know why he doesn't use the driveway. He continues to park on the wrong side of the road and close to the corner. So, I took this picture when I backed out of my driveway, and as you can see, I want you to see this, because-
We don't, we don't even need to discuss that, because that's, that's automatic, if they can put those right up, that's the state law.
It's unbelievable.
Does he even follow the parking bans, too? Does he even follow the parking bans on those in the current street?
Wow.
I actually-
They're saying they can't plow around it, so.
Yes, I actually called the police on the last push law, and I think they went there to tell them to move the car.
So as we discussed, the best way to address this would be that, no parking 25 feet from the corner. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to DPW for the erection of a no parking sign 25 feet from the corner of Coe Street on both sides.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Nakala, any questions? There being none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number 11, no parking. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on no parking on Spicer Street.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Again, we do have the residents from Spicer Street, we, as you know, we did just pass an ordinance that would make it resident-only parking on your end of Spicer Street on both sides. That being said, I know you were still having issues going on before this came about. I did wanna put this on the agenda to sort of brainstorm the idea of making a portion of Spicer Street no parking. If you would like to come up and speak on that, otherwise, we may wanna defer this to the next council meeting to see how the resident-only parking situation is going.
Okay, the only problem I really have with this is the simple fact that during the snowstorm, this last snowstorm, we had a parking ban from 6:30 that night to 6:30 the following night. They came in, Providence Bagel, the employees, and parked all the way down Spicer Street. Plows couldn't do their job. I gave them the benefit of the doubt, I waited two hours, they didn't budge the cars at all. I called the police, it took them the second time around calling them to get them there, and they went in and told them to move it. The whole point is, they don't care where they park, or how they park, or who they disturb while they're parking. I mean, that's what's getting irritating about this. We live there. We don't come in from 5:00 in the morning and go home at 5:00 at night. We stay there the whole entire time. I don't park in somebody else's yard, I don't pull in and out of anybody else's driveway, because to me, that's rude. It's not my yard, I don't belong there. They constantly pull in and out of my yard. They park in front of my house, they leave it there all day. So, I mean, the other day, the cars were parked all the way to the corner with the no parking sign there. I called the police, his report was, there's nothing wrong with it. I called the sergeant, I said, what do you mean, there's nothing wrong with it? The car is at the corner where it says, "Do not park," how is there nothing wrong with it? Parked the wrong direction. What did you do?
So, at that point, you didn't get ticketed, they didn't do anything?
No, they didn't do anything, he left them. He said there was no problem. Who do you call?
Here's what I'd like to do, Ms. Dewal. Since we already have the first remedial measure in place, I'd like to refer this to the ordinance committee or make, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee. That way, we can still see how the resident-only parking's working, but let's get the ball rolling on this one as well. So I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make two motions. First motion is to refer this to the ordinance committee for discussion and vote on a possible no parking on Spicer for a certain distance.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
The second motion I'd like to make is that we send a letter to the police department asking them to increase activity on Spicer Street to make sure that they are in compliance with, one, the no parking twenty-five feet from the corner, and also the new requirement of resident-only parking.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve, no through traffic. Councilman Famagetti requests discussion and possible vote on a no, no through traffic sign on Spicer Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, trying to have different ways to address this issue. I think this is one of the other ways that we were trying to brainstorm a solution to this problem. So I think a no tra, through traffic sign might be helpful, but I'd like to make a motion to send this to the police department for a traffic study on this.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo.
Send that one to ordinance as well.
And make that motion now. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
And I'd like to make the second motion to refer the no-through traffic sign to ordinance on Spicer Street.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? Sir?
Yes, on the same question. They don't pay attention. That sign ain't gonna mean nothing to them. I got no parking in front of my house, and already I had to call the police three times. One guy said he didn't see it. Fortunately, he, he left before the cop arrived. Second time, there was a construction guy there that was building the place. So the police officer went over and told him to move it, and he moved it. The third one was on a Sunday. They parked there, they went in the bagel place. They were there maybe an hour. And I called the police. They were talking to the manager or some woman there. Next thing I know, we put a warning sign on the window of his car, or her car.
A warning?
So they, they don't pay attention, even the, even the no parking sign in front of my house. They don't pay attention.
I guess what my hope would be is that you provide so much notice that you don't have an excuse for your neglect to comply with the, so in other words, you have notice of twenty-five, no parking twenty-five feet from the corner. Then you have the whole street that's saying that it's resident-only parking. Now you don't have an excuse for where you park. So I think, again, these are little solutions that combined together might resolve the problem, or at least we're heading in the right direction.
Well, like I say, they're not gonna pay attention to that, no through traffic, to- Either that, they gotta be explained to the manager of the bagel place to warn the people.
Has business subsided there at all?
I know it's a business place and all that.
Has it subsided at all?
But what about the people that live on the street? Don't they have any rights?
Absolutely.
You know?
Well, I think what he's, what he's asking is, since the grand opening, has business slowed down at all, or is it still, it's still, okay?
So that place is jamming there, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirteen, trees on pate property. Councilman Famagetti requests discussion and possible vote on removal of trees on pate property. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Particularly on the end of pate property that's abutting, Tingley Street. There's a pear tree on the back of one of the homes over there. What happens is the pears during the summer, they'll fall, rot, and bring rodents into the residents' backyard over there. I believe it's fifteen Tingley behind that property. That's actually the pate property, which is now owned by the town. So that being said, I would like to make a motion to send a letter to the Department of Public Works for removal of the pear tree on pate property.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number fourteen, code violations. Councilman Famagetti requests discussion and possible vote on possible code violations at eleven ninety Charles Street. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Charles Place on Charles Street. It's a apartment complex over there. I, Councilman Amerigi and myself, we did receive a complaint from one of the residents in the Charles Place regarding leaky roofs and whatnot. So at this time, I'd like to invite the resident up to the podium to explain a little bit more about the situation that's going on.
Hi, ma'am, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Margaret Anosaya. And I live at eleven ninety Charles Street, Unit Fifty. I'm one of the owners over there. And I've literally been noticing water stains on my rugs. This started back in September. And I did notify the management about this issue. First of all, they told me that it was probably from my unit on its own. And that was not part of the issue, it's something they can resolve. So I did have the maintenance guy from the condo management come over to my unit. He told me that was water stains, and there's a possibility that it could be pipes or leakage somewhere. I said, okay. And he basically said he was gonna go back to the board to let them know that this is what he noticed. But at the same time, I could either get somebody to come and do it on my own. I said, well, why should I do that? That's part of the condo. So the next thing I know was I got a response back from the property management telling me that they don't have any pipes running through the bedrooms. It's only between the bathrooms and the kitchen area. That that will be something I'll have to resolve on my own, like this stated earlier. And I said, well, why is this gonna be on me? This is water showing up in my kids' room, in my bedroom, and in my living room. I have pictures here to show you, like, basically what I'm talking about. They just told me that unfortunately, I'll have to contact my insurance company. So I did contact the insurance company, and they said the same thing, like, unfortunately, you know, this seems to be like a water issue with the building itself. And they can't pay me for the damages unless they know where the issue's coming from. So I said, okay. I went back to the management again. Same thing, I got a stone wall from them telling me they're not responsible. I went to the mayor's office, made a complaint over there. I was told they don't deal with management when it comes to the condominiums. I went to the building inspector office down here in North Providence. He said all he can do was drive by the building. And from the pictures I showed him, he called me back and said, well, he thinks there's a leak roof. And there's a water leak somewhere in the roof. There's another owner on the first floor who had a similar issue in his bathroom, like his ceilings were physically fallen off. And it's just like, okay, I was walking down the hallway sometime in around November, December. I saw this huge water stain on the first floor, dropped ceilings. And I took a picture of it. I said, okay, so if you're telling me that this water damage is coming not anywhere else, why is this here on the first floor? You know, it's my house, it's my unit, fine. But this, there seems to be like a structural damage in that building, but they're not ready to fix it. They sent me a picture of the attic, because I live on the fourth floor, which is the last floor. But from what I saw, it's like, the pictures there seems to be like, there's wetness in the attic. I can't really tell, but from what the picture shows, there is water stains on the attic also. And that's why I went to my counseling.
Have you spoke to the condo association?
Yes.
And they have not taken any action?
No.
Have you spoke to the minimum housing inspector?
No, I went to the building inspector, actually.
What's that?
The building inspector office down the street.
Do you wanna send a letter?
That's exactly what I, I would like to make a motion to send a letter to the minimum, minimum housing to seek permission to enter the property, see if there's any code violations.
Okay.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juasty. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Yeah, wanna, yeah, I could, I'll- Do you have letters that go with these board of students? Do you have his letter?
Okay, item number fifteen, board appointments. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to appointments to be made to the following boards. A, zoning board. Dare Mrs. De Angelis, please allow this letter to serve as my formal resignation from the North Providence zoning board effective January sixth, two thousand and nineteen. In reading the town chart, my understanding is that I was automatically removed from my seat on the zoning board upon my swearing-in as town councilman for District Three. However, out of an abundance of caution, I am sending this letter as well. It has been my great honor to serve on the North Providence zoning board, and I am looking forward to continuing to serve the residents of our town in my new position. Very truly yours, Mario Martone. Do I have a motion to accept the letter of resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juasty. Seconded by Councilman Famagetti. Any questions? Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juasty. Councilman Amerigi asked me to hold off on that vote because he's out of town. However, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Bacala?
Aye.
Councilman Famagetti?
Aye.
Councilman Juisty?
Aye.
Councilman Martone?
Nay.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. So the motion fails. Three to three. Okay, B, tax board of review. Alternate reapport, reappointment. Doris White, do we have a motion to reappoint Doris White?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. C, environmental commission. Two appointments. One, reappointment of Rodrick De Silva. Do we have a motion to reappoint Rodrick De Silva?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, I'll defer that to next month as well. Do we have a motion to defer appointment of a council representative to next month?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The last two were made last month.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item sixteen, claims submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following. Dean Goodman, nineteen Washington Street, North Providence, and Christopher Manjoka, twenty-six Sylvia Ave, North Providence. Do I have a motion to refer these to the claims committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Famagetti. Seconded by Councilman Juasty. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seventeen, claims committee report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims committee report and approval, denial, or referral of claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Juasty. Councilman?
Yeah. The Christopher Manjoli, Manjola-
Manjoka?
Yeah, Manjoka. We're, that's already been sent to the insurance company for a claim. And Dean Goodman, we're going to offer him seventy-five hundred dollars. He wants eighty-five, seventy-three. We're gonna offer him seventy-five hundred dollars plus, if he has a back check valve put in, we'll grant him five hundred dollars.
Okay. A motion to accept the claims committee report.